Good morning, and I'd like to call to order the October 15, 2020 business meeting, and you can join us by going to www.clackamas.us/meetings/bcc/business/2020-10-15. So, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary to take our roll.
As chair, first, our staff supports today Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, Rich Marvin, Public and Government Affairs. A roll call, Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are holding this meeting virtually if you're joining us on Zoom app for this meeting, and your interest in writing public comment will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send in a comment to be read during public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send it to bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area where you live. And with that, Gary, what's up next?
Yes, first, I want to mention today is the Great Shakeout Commissioners, which occurs at 10:15 a.m. Whomever is speaking at 10:15 a.m., I will ask you to stop and have Nancy Bush give a quick update on what that means. So, warning to any of you who may be speaking in 13 minutes. With that, we'll start with an elections update. We have Clackamas County Clerk Sherry Hall here, as well as Jeff Jorgensen, our Facilities Director at Clackamas County. And first, though, Sherry will give you an update on the elections for 2020 and how things are going so far. So, please go ahead, Sherry.
Good morning, Commissioners, and this is not something I usually do until a week after ballots have gone out. But there's a lot going on because of COVID and because of all the national hype on elections. So, I guess I'll give you some things that we've been doing. And of course, you probably know that our election is well underway. We've been working a lot more busily for a longer time than usual at this point. One of the examples is ballots were mailed out yesterday, October 14th, which is the first day that we can mail ballots out. And so, of course, we had many people that were coming in the office to get ballots early for whatever reason. And at this point, we have issued 1,174 early ballots. And in 2018, we, at this point, we had only issued 100 or so. And in '16, their last presidential, only 29. So, everybody's focused on voting. We can tell by how many we've issued. Our setup is going to be pretty similar to the May election because that was our first election under COVID. And the ballot processing area has been set up to maintain the space distancing like we need. All of our workers will be, okay, all of our workers will be safe, and they should have confidence in our mail system. Our front office lobby has plexiglass barriers in place, and we've added online web forms for voters to submit changes, so they don't have to come in for everything. And we have a will call system where they can order their ballot early and just come in and pick it up rather than waiting in line in the office, and they can order ahead of time. We expect a historic turnout because we have a historic number of registered voters. Let me see here. We have 308,802 registered voters as opposed to 16 where we had, just a second, 269,000. So, that's quite a bit more. You can ask questions too as I'm going along. I'm giving you more information than I normally would.
Gary?
Yes?
Is there a map of where drop boxes are located around the county?
Yes, there is, and it's actually, there's a scan tag in the voter's pamphlet, so someone can scan that. And under Google Maps, it will show where the boxes are. We also have a list of them in the voter's pamphlet, and they are also online.
And how many are there out there?
25. And again, I'm going to compliment you Commissioners for those boxes because you approved that purchase about two years ago, and we didn't even know what was coming. But there are no touch points on the box. Nobody has to pull a door open to put their ballot in, which was a question in May. There's just a slot where they drop the ballot. The boxes are extremely heavy. The smallest one weighs about 450 pounds. The one in our parking lot weighs over 1,000 pounds. They're very thick, very secure. So, we don't think anything will happen to them.
So, tell me, how are the ballots collected out of the drop boxes?
Okay, we have teams of two people of two opposite political parties that will be picking up the ballots on a regular schedule. And we know what times they're going to be doing that now. But with the election and maybe more ballots being dropped at one box or another than we expect, we will change that schedule. And the phone number is on every box. So, if a voter goes to the box and sees that there is overflowing ballots, they can make a call to our office, and we'll immediately go out and empty it. And the last empty will be 8 o'clock election night. And we will also have security there at each box for the safety of our team that picks up the ballots and for closing the box. All law enforcement in Clackamas County is very cooperative and supportive, and anything we've asked, they're going to do.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, because the ballots, like I said, were mailed yesterday. So, next week, I can give you another update, I guess, to let you know how many we've received back. We are hoping that everyone can vote early, and it helps us because the ballots are coming in early, and we will have more numbers at first returns at 8 o'clock election night. And for voters who vote early, those groups who buy the list of voters, only the ones that still have time, you know, have yet to vote, the ones who have voted should quit getting any campaign mail. I'm not sure about any calls or any of that. I don't know what's going on. But once you've voted, your name should be taken off the list to keep sending information to by the campaigns.
I have Sonia Fisher and Ken would like to ask a question. Sonia?
Thank you, Sherry. Always nice to see you. Couple questions. Last election, when COVID had just come upon us, the May election, we, there was a decision to not use all the volunteers that had usually worked in the past and to redirect some staff to assist.
It was actually not our choice not to use them. There were about 60% who chose not to work because of the virus, and they wanted to stay safe. And Gary was very good at redeploying some county employees, so we had plenty of people. And he's doing that again this time, but we need fewer this time.
Okay, that was what I was wondering, if we were using the same process or if volunteers were going to be back, but...
And they volunteered to work, but they get paid.
Okay, so we're basically not utilizing volunteers as the main source of support on elections.
No, everyone that's a temporary worker gets paid a wage.
Okay. And then my next question, so I think I was, I might have been this morning, I was listening to National Public Radio, and I got a little bit of a story. I wish I would have heard the whole story, but I thought you might be able to shed some light on it. I guess in California, there have been ballot boxes that have been put up, and there's a concern about that. And I guess there might be a legal challenge. I guess one of the political parties put up the ballot boxes. Do you know anything about that? And could that be a problem here where we are?
Well, Oregon has rules in place for everything like that, including people collecting ballots that aren't official. They have to have signage saying that they are not official. If they choose to set up an unofficial ballot box, it has to have a label on it saying what, oh, let me see here. I have it right here because our state director put out a list of legal things. Can someone collect ballots from others at a central location to turn in? The answer is, it depends. Yes, if they have a sign stating "Not an Official Ballot Drop Site" printed in all capital letters in bold 50-point type. No, if they don't. And can someone collect ballots from others by going door to door to turn in? It depends. Yes, if a person returns a ballot for someone not later than two days after receiving the ballot and before the polls close. No, if they don't turn the ballot, turn in the ballot within two days or by the close of the polls. Both of these are found in ORS 260.695. And a recent election, within the last couple of years, there was a group who picked up ballots, and voters willingly gave their ballots to someone they didn't know, which is something I would never do. But it was proved that that group did not turn the ballots into the Elections Office, and there were several. And the state Elections did the investigation, and that group was fined. So, Oregon has laws in place to cover most of that. And so, you need to get your information from a trusted source in Oregon, like the County Clerk's Office or the State Elections Office. What we're hearing about all kinds of other things in other states doesn't always, and most times never, matches what Oregon does because we've been doing this for over 20 years, and we have everything covered.
So, you don't have any concerns? I mean, there is. There's so much news media about our election process, but you're feeling confident that Oregon...
We need a break. Gary?
Yeah, I'm sorry. The Great Shakeout is about to happen in one, in two minutes. So, forgive me. Nancy Bush, if you don't mind, can you give a two-minute update of what's about to happen, please?
Sure. So, on the Great Shakeout, which is a national effort, and it's required here in Oregon by public entities as well as schools. So, at this time, at the Shakeout, we're going to encourage everyone to drop cover and hold, or at least think about where you would do that if it were to start shaking. Take a look above you to see what's above you because lights and those types of things will fall, which is why we want you under a hard surface. After the shaking stops, you would actually evacuate the building that you are in. And here on our campus, we have certain places that that would happen. We're not going to be practicing that today. But this is just a reminder that what you need to do if we do have a large earthquake and you do feel the ground shake. And I also want to just say, please sign up for public alerts because that is how you'll be getting some information from us as a government. And you can go to clackamas.us/d, as in disaster, and m as in management. And that is my plug for the Great Shakeout.
So, Nancy, is that the same alert we have for the fire?
Yes, public alerts is for all emergencies and life safety.
Thank you.
All right. So, if any of you are at the county right now, I need you to please mute yourself because an announcement is about to go off. Otherwise, we can continue our conversation.
Thank you.
So, Sherry?
I don't have to go under my desk? Okay. I was really looking forward to that. Anyway, so Sherry, I just want to make sure that my assumptions are correct, and I can tell people with confidence that in Oregon, we don't have the many concerns that are going on around the country.
We definitely don't. Was there another question from Commissioner Humberston?
Briefly, would you let people know how they can track their ballot so they're assured that their ballot is actually getting to your offices?
Okay. We have been working closely with PGA, Dylan, to be specific, who's just so great with everything we do with him. And we've been really increasing voter outreach and education. We hosted a virtual town hall the other night to answer questions about voting procedures in Oregon. And our constant message has been for voters to go to trusted sources for any election-related things. And we've been encouraging voters to make a plan to vote so that November 3rd doesn't get here, and they haven't voted yet. They need to put it on their calendar. And for voters to be feeling confident that their vote, that their ballot reach our office, it is possible to check that online under the My Votes website through the Secretary of State's office. And it's also possible to call us. We will show that the ballot has been received after it has been received because that gets scanned into the statewide voter file.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to at least really tell folks out there listening that when I first got involved at the county level about 10 years ago as a Commissioner and heard a number of concerns about elections and so on, and the security of one's vote and security of the system. And after touring the Elections Office facility and understanding and looking at all the precautions being taken and the fact that there's a balance of party representation oversight during the count and how well managed it is, I got a lot more confidence in the system and learning more, even in discussions with the former, one of the former Secretaries of States actually as well. So, I'm pretty confident in telling people that in Oregon that our election system is pretty sound, and we were one of the pioneers really of the mail-in ballot. So, we seem to be well positioned for this COVID thing. So, I just want to just convey that I have confidence in the system here in Oregon. But I do have one question. I want to just shift a little bit and ask Sherry. You mentioned earlier in response to a question about picking up the ballots, and that it's a, there's both parties are represented. There's two people, one from one party and one from another. I know we have predominantly a two-party system of sorts, but for those that are interested and wanting to be involved, is there any opportunity that for people that are not affiliated with one of the two parties to participate in any of this? Because it seems as though that maybe sometimes other parties or people that aren't affiliated with partisanship want to be involved and want to vote, but don't want to affiliate as a party and want to participate in that system. Is there any opportunity?
Yes, because that would be considered a separate party. A non-affiliated voter and a Democrat is two separate. A non-affiliated and a Republican, a non-affiliated and a Libertarian. All of the parties that you have a choice of marking on your voter's reg are considered a separate group from another one. So, non-affiliated is fine. We have some husband-wife teams that are teams doing what we do because they're both registered at different parties. They call it a mixed marriage. Yeah, it's, non-affiliated is definitely another group that is perfectly willing and welcome to participate in working as a temporary worker in elections.
Well, so, thank you for that. So, did I hear you correctly to say even a non-affiliated is actually considered a party?
Well, it's considered a group. When we're looking at putting together voting temporary workers, we need to know their party affiliation. And so, non-affiliated would be one affiliation as opposed, that's opposite of Republican or Democrat or Libertarian. All the parties that have names can work with non-affiliated because the non-affiliated is not the same party as their partner. That's what I'm saying. It's not a party, but it's considered a separate group.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And you know, this year, we have quite a bit of extra money that's going to be used instead of using general fund, I guess, when we turn our budget. And at the end of the year, you should like it. We've received external funding, which includes $30,000 in HAVA Security Funds. And HAVA, you know, is the Federal Money Help America Vote Act that started about 20 years ago. We have $124,881.75 in COVID funds, CRF funds. And you are going to be signing a grant today for $176,166 from the Center for Tech and Civic Life, which is funded by Facebook. And you're not going to read this part on your consent agenda, but I want to let you know what it is because it's quite a bit of money. The Center for Tech and Civic Life is offering a COVID-19 Response Grant Program to all U.S. local election jurisdictions with a $250 million fund. The CTCL is providing grants to local elections jurisdictions across the country to help ensure staffing and training and equipment necessary. So, this November, every eligible voter can participate in a safe and timely way and have their vote counted. The CTCL has provided these grants to 1,700 jurisdictions so far. And we upgraded our tally system by adding two additional stations. So, we have two additional tallies for the ballots. And then our sorting machine has been upgraded. And we were already going to pay for that out of our money for the budget, but this grant will now take over. So...
Well, thank you very much for coming today, and we look forward to you coming next week to tell us where we're at.
To tell you how many early ballots we got back.
Yeah, looking forward to that. So, vote and vote often.
Vote early.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Sherry, did Jeff want to add anything?
Yes. Jeff is going to discuss the traffic plan for our main ballot box here on the Red Soils Campus in Oregon City. So, Jeff, would you please go ahead? You're on mute, Jeff. You're on mute.
There it is. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I just want to say that Facilities Management has been working with elections here for a while. Earlier this year, we had training with Homeland Security talking about elections, security. So, there's various things that we're doing around our facility over here with elections. One of those is, we do daily inspections of the facilities, make sure there's no tampering with utilities, this kind of stuff, so make sure the security of the building. Additionally, as of yesterday, just to make sure we have plenty of parking spots for the citizens coming into the Elections Office. All of our employees are parking over in the PSB employee lot now, just to provide additional parking. Additionally, we've also been working with the Traffic Control Group in Department of Transportation Development with Joe Merrick and his group for the traffic plan, which is probably the biggest issue we have. Every presidential election since we moved up here, we've had some traffic issues and jams. So, we're talking with DTD, Sherry. We got a plan up here that we've submitted to Oregon City and working with them. So, Christina, could you put that up? Shows a diagram of the campus. And so, here is the road at Beaver Creek. To the right is Red Soils Court with elections partway down there. So, the blue lines are traffic. So, as traffic is coming off of Beaver Creek Road, we've, in the past, we've had, you're turning left onto Red Soils Court, and then people are going back out and turning, trying to turn left onto Beaver Creek. So, we have big traffic jams. So, what we're going to have is, we have a contract with a traffic control company, working with Joe Merrick and their group, so that at the corners of Beaver Creek and Red Soils Court and at Kane and Beaver Creek, we will have flagging teams there on just November 2nd and 3rd, the Monday and Tuesday, which we, in the past, has been our big issues. And with the big turnout, we believe we could have some issues. We have money in the contract. If it shows that Friday or Thursday, we start having some problems, we can have them come out too. Part of the contract is to go ahead and put the big electronic information boards, two of them on Warner Millney, two of them on Beaver Creek, to tell people congestion ahead, be aware, detour around. But as people come off of Beaver Creek, they come down Red Soils Court, will turn into the Elections Central Utility Plant Building to drop off their ballots or come and park to resolve any other election issues. It's one way in, across the front of the building, and one way out. So, when you turn, come out of the building, you're turning right, and you're going to go across the front of the Silver Oak Building, go into that gravel parking lot, and be routed over to Kane Road, and then up Kane Road, and pass the PSB, and forced to turn left just to go ahead and make sure that we don't have traffic going right back into that queuing and traffic problem. After you go up to Warner Millney, you can turn right or left, east or west, no problems. We're working with the jail to make sure that, you know, if there's an emergency and you need ambulance, fire, law enforcement to go to the jail, there's nobody to come down on the south heading traffic on Kane Road to affect them. So, we believe that this will be consistent. The traffic flaggers will be out there periodically. As traffic builds up, they'll be out there. So, they're not going to be out there all day long at the intersections. It's kind of as traffic dictates. Hopefully, we don't have a big issue, but we're prepared to make sure that everybody has a chance to get their ballot in, and just working with Sherry to make sure that that happens. We've been working with plenty of the county groups to make sure that that does happen. Any questions?
Paul?
Yeah, Jeff, thank you for your presentation. And if I heard you correctly, you mentioned flaggers. So, my biggest concern is obviously on the map we showed is safety in regard. So, turning left off of Kane Road onto Beaver Creek is kind of a dangerous intersection, can be. And so, were you, or will there be a flagger to help people exit and make that left?
There's actually going to be, the flaggers are a team of three flaggers. So, there's going to be three flaggers out at each of those intersections from, on Monday morning, from 6:30 in the morning till 8:00 at night. And this is both Kane Road and Red Soils Court. And on Tuesday, from 6:30 in the morning till 9:00 at night after the polls close. So, there will be flaggers out there to make sure people can move along expeditiously and safely.
Okay. As an aside, and no pun intended, but I want to flag that intersection for a safety issue going forward because it is dangerous pulling out of there, you know, quite often during the busier times. And it's just, you know, if this is the case, it might be a little bit more so. But it's something that I think we need to work with the city and ourselves on figuring out how to make that intersection safer.
You can do that. Okay?
All right, Jeff, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for your map. And again, vote early.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Okay, there's quite a bit of traffic within our office also, and we have recording on one side and elections on the other, but it's the same lobby for both. So, Jeff and his team has also come into that area, and we're going to have, we're going to allow people to come in the front door of the office. And then they also have to go out the back door because of space. Again, you know, there's markers on the floor for how far people need to stand apart. But to be going in and out the same door would have been way too much traffic. So, Jeff has planned that traffic pattern too in the building. And I want to say thank you to him and his team because they've got everything done in time, and we're ready for crowds.
Thank you. All right. Gary, what's up next?
Next, we have wildfire updates. Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander of our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead, Nancy.
All right. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. So, just a brief update on what's going on with our fires. So, Riverside Fire in Beechey Creek, which are still under federal jurisdiction. Riverside is still at over, just over 138,000 acres and is now 72% contained. Beechey Creek is at 193,573 acres and is now 80% contained. And all of the And all of the other fires that were the smaller fires, which is Unger, Dowdy, Will Hoyt, and Graves, are now all reporting a hundred percent contained. So that is good, good news for us. Um, so there's a lot that's been going on here in the EOC, and I just want to touch a little bit on what we're doing for, um, those individuals that, uh, may not have their home any longer or were houseless and were displaced during the fires. Um, so we have worked with everyone, um, trying to get them space. We do have about seven families that we're still working with. Um, some of them came from the RV park that was the Clackamas River RV Park. We are working on getting them back as they get the sewage and their other hookups, they're available to them. And then we're working on some permanent places for two to three other families that we need to work with. So that's been going, um, pretty well here in Clackamas County. It's been a struggle because all, all of you know, we do have a housing issue, uh, but we've been working through that here in the EOC, I'm happy to say. I also have some preliminary numbers that I'd like to share with you, and if Christina, if you could bring those up for me. Again, these are preliminary. Um, and what we are looking at here in Clackamas County for the loss to the county, and this is public, we call it public assistance through FEMA. We have one point two million in county labor costs from September sixth to September twentieth. Uh, that was the first pay period for the wildland fires. That includes everything here in the EOC. That includes CCSO, uh, working with us in the field. Uh, it includes, uh, some of the go teams. We had several go teams go out, which is for behavioral health to help, uh, with some support there. Uh, so that's, the, that labor cost covers quite a bit. And when, of course, we don't have the cost yet for the next pay period. We think there's going to be about four million dollars in costs to remove around four thousand burnt trees. Um, we're working on what that may look like, and if any of the trees may or may not be able to use, be used in other places, or are they too burned out? There's two million dollars lost in timber revenue and four hundred and twenty-eight, eight acres of county forest land was burnt here in Clackamas County. As far as culverts and other, uh, repairs to the road system, we're estimating about half a million dollars there. And then parks repair estimate is about a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred forty-five thousand dollars, which is, uh, we think pretty much related to the straight winds that came in. Uh, just reminding everybody that it's not just a wildland fire that was part of the declaration, it's also the straight winds that we had over the weekend prior to the fires, which was Labor Day weekend. The homes and structures lost. Uh, we are seeing about four hundred and fifty properties, um, that in, that are in the fire affected areas. A hundred and eleven properties have been damaged or destroyed or have destroyed structures. At this time, we have around sixty-two homes lost. Again, this is preliminary. I expect that number to go up just a little bit, but because there's some, uh, homes we can't see from the ward right away. And, uh, we do have a flyover that we're looking at now to see if we can determine if some of those homes have been lost. So I do expect that number to go up a little bit. Two hundred and fourteen other structures that have been damaged or destroyed, and again, that may go up, uh, depending what we can see from the flyover. And those structure homes and personal property cleanup is estimated at six point eight million dollars. And again, that number may go slightly up or down depending on some of the, um, other things that we find as we move forward. The losses to business and tourism, uh, we're still investigating a lot of this. We haven't received a lot of information, especially from around the Moala and the Estacada area, so we continue to reach out. A lot that I have here on this list is actually related to the straight winds that was on, uh, the Hoodland area. So six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars reported loss in revenues from the businesses on the Mount Hood and that, and some of the fire affected areas. Uh, we have businesses that shut down for five or more days, especially in the Mount Hood, Estacada, Sandy, and Cambie, the Moala. And the city of Wilsonville itself shut down for seven days. Timberline Lodge, uh, was closed September eighth through the twenty-second and have about six hundred thousand dollars of revenue lost there. Um, they also have the windstorm damage in the, uh, trees that are down in their ski area. Um, they have over five hundred trees that have been uprooted, and they are still taking a look at, uh, the other trees and assessment of, of damage there and what may be unsafe that needs to come out. Government camp has estimated a loss of eight hundred thousand dollars at the gas station, uh, there in their, uh, that particular area. And the, there's a revenue losses for the Brew Pub as well, uh, probably in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for that time period that the power was out on the Hoodland area. In addition to this, which we don't have numbers on, of course, there's loss for the recreational assets that are just outside of Estacada and Moala, such as the Scenic Byway, Scenic Bike Way, um, and other Clackamas River attractions. Because as people, of course, travel through those communities, they stop, they may have lunch, they may buy gas, those types of things. So there's also that loss from that revenue. And it's just a reminder that this all happened still at the height of this summer. Um, so there were a lot of things and a lot of activities that were planned that did have to be, uh, canceled because of the wildland fires. So Christina, you can take that down. Thank you. And, um, yeah, that is the, the end of my report, so if you have any questions, please let me know.
Um, Martha, Sonia, and then Paul. You're on mute, Martha.
Uh, barking dogs again. Um, Nancy, can you email us that, um, your report?
So we can. Yeah, probably, yeah. Christina will.
Okay.
Yeah, Christina will do that right after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, and is it on the website? Are we going to put that up on the, uh?
It's not because it's preliminary. Um, it's, there's still a lot we need to, to find out. And I don't want any misunderstanding of what's out there.
Okay, thank you.
Sonia.
Yeah, I'm just curious. On the sheet, it said, it was estimated it costs four million dollars for burn, to remove burned trees. So I'm just thinking of all the hiking that I've done in my, not all of it, but many through forests that have been burned and trees weren't removed. So what's the criteria to determine if it, if trees need to be removed and? What goes into that?
Yeah, the trees that we're talking about are in the right of way, so they are near roads and they're of a danger to falling into the roadway at any point. So those are the trees. We actually literally had someone go out and count trees.
Oh, wow. So that's a lot of money, four million dollars for trees. The other question that I have, there was two hundred and some structure, sixty-two homes lost, two hundred and something structures damaged or destroyed. Do those structures, does that number include homes that have been damaged by smoke?
No, these are damaged, the, the damage is, um, related to partially burned. Um, I, and yeah, the, I don't believe I have the numbers on smoke damage.
Okay, and then I'm just curious, when there is smoke damage, is that a pretty expensive cleanup for homeowners?
I don't have, I, I'm, I, it probably depends on, you know, of course, the extent of the damage, and I don't have numbers on that.
Okay, and do you know if insurance covers smoke damage?
You have to look at your insurance. Every insurance policy is different, and you have to, every, everyone has to look at their insurance policy just to tell that.
Okay, so more information to come, I'm sure, as we figure out the effects of the wildfires. Thank you so much, Nancy. Really appreciate the information.
Paul?
Yeah, uh, hello, Nancy. Um, uh, I, I know that you responded in email, uh, via Gary about, um, about my question, but maybe you could just elaborate a little bit for my colleagues and others that are watching. So the question came up at a Housing, uh, Homeless Solutions Committee yesterday, uh, about, um, some challenges apparently for those who are homeless that were in, in danger in some of the areas. And my, and it sounds like a number of the accommodations that were made for the evacuees that, um, apparently that the, some of the folks out there being homeless were not considered evacuees without an address, apparently. I'm not really, that's not, I'm getting this like third, fourth hand here, so. So my, my question is, and you mentioned ARC, um, and if you could elaborate on that as well in your email, uh, to me. But, uh, my, my question is, is there, is there a different, um, I won't say treatment, but a, a different response from our emergency management in those times for people that don't have addresses? Or, I'm trying to understand that, if it could.
No, there is, there is not a different response for individuals, um, in that, um, so, you know, what happens? Of course, everyone is welcomed into our shelters. And, um, so whenever we did evacuate, if they came to the shelter and/or were transported there, then yes, I mean, they had, were in the shelter, they were taken care of, um, with everyone else. And then as those shelters are closed down, then we work to place everyone that was in that shelter that was displaced by the fire.
Okay, I will work, I will work hard. Yeah, I'll, I'll work hard to help clear that up, but apparently there's, there, there was, um, a pretty strong indication that, that, uh, maybe some of those evacuated, or those sites where people were evacuated to, um, maybe had a different policy there. I don't know.
If they were sponsored by the American Red Cross or if they were sponsored by Clackamas County, they, anyone is accepted into those shelters.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to add something. Yesterday, we were on the phone with the Regional Solutions Economic Wildfire Recovery Team. And one of the issues we do have is case management. Uh, we need help from the state how to manage those people who are homeless, uh, because of the fire. And we've asked the state to help us out, find food, shelter, healthcare, and other basic essential, essentials. Uh, it's a very heavy lift for Clackamas County to do on its own. So we've asked, uh, we've been told by FEMA that, uh, it will be several weeks before, uh, we can receive their assistance. So we're asked the state, uh, to step up and help us out with some of that case management. There are lots of other issues discussed yesterday about economic relief for those businesses that have been, uh, affected. Uh, we're, uh, you know, uh, working hard with that group. Uh, so there were lots of good questions, and, uh, this is going to be happening until the end of the year. Uh, Martha and I are both on that, uh, on that committee, uh, along with a bunch of state people, DEQ, economic development, uh, people who, nonprofits, churches, everything. There's quite a group, so look forward to that discussion. So Sonia and then Martha.
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back with, I think what Paul was referring to, because I also received information, I went out to one of the, um, shelters that were, was mostly for people who were unsheltered, um, prior to the fires. Paul, it's the, the, um, church that was actually close to you in Oak Grove and really heard about some challenges of people who were unsheltered, not being accepted into Red Cross and just issues back and forth. Um, and I reported all of that to Gary, who has that on a list, of a couple other issues for us to debrief and deconstruct, just so that we make sure that in the future, we do what we do well again in, in future emergencies, and then really dissect where things didn't work. But I can tell you, our staff and our emergency operations were on it really very quickly. And the heat, that, that smoke-free shelter that was set up in Oak Grove was set up in a matter of hours because of the emergency response from our Emergency Operations Center to make sure that people that were unsheltered had a smoke-free place to go. I went out there and visited and saw how it was socially distanced setup and how it was being operated. There was a tremendous effort in a very short turnaround. But yeah, some things in the midst of an emergency were very challenging. So I'd say, suggest, Paul, if you have other information, let's keep the list going. Gary is on it, collecting all of that information, and we will, um, take a look at it.
All right, Martha.
You're on mute.
Martha, you're on mute.
One of the things that I wanted to add to what Jim, Jim had to say in terms of business recovery, um, I think we need to be aware that our economic development folks are actually setting up recovery centers throughout the county. And that basically, they're going to be areas where they can get information, um, concerning everything from continuing to get funding to, you know, FEMA information. And it's specifically going to be geared towards, um, our small businesses and our communities. So I was really pleased that not only are we doing a good job, uh, with our vulnerable populations, we're also doing a really excellent job. I want to give a shout out to Business and Community Services with what they have been doing proactively to help, uh, to help folks, you know, keep their livelihood, keep their businesses going, keep their employees employed. Um, it's been pretty remarkable. So I think on all, um, all fronts, I really have to say to Gary and to everybody that works with our county, with, that works with us and in our county, they've been doing a phenomenal job.
Thank you, Martha. We need to move on soon. Paul?
Yeah, I just want to build on, uh, Martha's, uh, comments, um, and she touched on employees. So when I think of businesses, I, I, I can't help but not think about the employees that are employed there and the hardship that they're all, a lot of them are already experiencing with maybe limited hours due to COVID or no hours for COVID. So let alone the forest fires just aggravating that. So I don't know if there's anything at all, maybe we can find out in the Employment Department or anyone, if there's any way of, um, for employees that may be lost, you know, possibly in permanent employment. Um, I assume that there would be some kind of accommodation. You know, they'd automatically be eligible for unemployment perhaps, but that's a concern. Um, and, um, I'd be, I'd be interested to know if the state has a, um, a means of, um, of helping those folks. Thank you.
All right, uh, Gary?
Uh, Nancy, anything else on wildfires?
Yeah. I'm sorry, just one more thing. I was hoping that Chair Bernard and Commissioner Schrader would talk a little bit too about the, um, discussion we had about debris removal yesterday to let the other commissioners know, and that we need to have something to the, uh, Governor's Office by the end of the day today. And we do have a meeting with them at one o'clock, or I do, and some of my staff here.
Yeah, of, of, of course, uh, debris removal, you know, actually, Clackamas County is way ahead of any other county. We have a plan. The problem is, we're working with the state. Uh, people are really getting kind of frustrated. They don't know when they're going to get help. And I'm afraid they're starting in Southern Oregon first. So it is going to take a while to work their way up here. Uh, but, uh, we've asked that the, uh, the state give us a timeline so we can actually give people that information. We are worried that people will start doing this themselves. The problem with doing it yourself is that if you go to take it to the dump and it's burnt, uh, material, you're going to need to verify that it's, uh, asbestos-free or hazardous waste-free, and you're not going to be able to do that uh, unless you've, uh, had this done by professionals. It's also dangerous to your health. Uh, so, uh, we, we're trying to get people to sign, of course, uh, uh, access. I suddenly just went out of my head.
Right of, right of entry.
Right of entry forms, which is, are due by Friday. And by the way, that, uh, person from DEQ said they would probably extend that, but not much more than a week later. But, uh, still, it's going to be a while before, uh, folks get up there to, to do that. And of course, we talked about our, even our public lands, uh, our concerns about, um, you know, is the state going to help us with that? But I think one important thing was that, and I, even though they seemed to ask us this, they had already made a decision. And that, and that is that the contract for cleanup will be under the state control, which is important because that means they pay for it. They pay for it, and they have to wait for FEMA to pay us. Uh, then the final question will be, what about, uh, private lands? Uh, or is the county or is the state going to clean up private property? And that's a question I don't think is quite answered yet. Uh, we'll find that out, and if it is, who will pay for that? Uh, uh, because it could be quite expensive, maybe somewhere around fourteen million, I think I, am I right, Nancy?
Ten to fourteen is what we're estimating.
Eighteen million. And of course, we don't want to have to pay for that and wait, uh, could be two, two and a half years before we get the money from the, from the FEMA. They do say they're going to make this a quick turnaround, but, you know, the federal government. You know, the federal government. Martha and then Ken. You, Martha.
What I picked up yesterday and I wanted to see what you thought about this is that they um, there's really no clarity. On where to go and what the metrics are. And, and that DEQ, we had some DEQ questions and they couldn't really quite answer them. I remember um. Posting and chatting saying, well, can you tell us this? And they said, well, we'll try and get back to you. And my concern is that given, given the culture of what we're dealing with in our rural areas, people are probably there already. Exposing themselves to things they probably shouldn't be exposed to. And then the other issue of dumping it um, up in the forest. In public forest lands and just kind of clearing it out and dumping it off somewhere. So could, could you talk about that? Why, why is there the lack of clarity with this?
So yeah, that's a really good question. And I mean, and part of the reason we want to talk about this a little bit today is we have a lot of questions that we've turned in. From the EOC about, you know, what if we go with the state and they actually are able to pay for everything and including the twenty-five percent? And there's a lack of clarity around that. So we, that's why we do have a meeting with them at one o'clock today to kind of get that information. Um, so by the end of the day, um, and uh, we do feel a little pressed to be making some of these decisions with that. All of the information. They would like to know if Clackamas County is interested or would wants to go down that. Path of having the state do all the cleanup, whether if it's for public or private. Which may or may not be approved. Um, but you know, what does that look like? And we will have more conversations on Tuesday. We have a session, but we do need to say today. If we are interested in having, going down that path. Um, and I guess my concern is, is I'm okay with going down that path as long as we know that we're going to have quality contractors. With experience, et cetera.
And that they'll help pay for, they'll pay for it. Okay.
That is what they're proposing right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, a cleanup of a proper, a property after a file, fire can be very expensive. Maybe is seventy-five thousand dollars is one estimate I heard. And you know, taking that on yourself and then expecting FEMA to uh, uh, reimburse you. Uh, I don't, I think thirty-five thousand, is that right, Nancy? Is the limit of FEMA dollars?
Yeah, thirty-five five for individual assistance um, you can get. And, and of course, everyone has to do their insurance first.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'd be sure to call your insurance agent. And again, the right of entry form needs to be filled out. By Friday. Uh, there is a, will be some extension perhaps a week, but the earlier the better. Think yesterday I heard eighteen hundred people maybe had signed in in the state.
In the state. And that is where hazardous household waste for sure is covered. We do not know about the other pieces at this time.
Right, thank you, Nancy. Ken.
Nancy, it's my understanding that, that, and from the signs I've seen uh, down by Home Depot. The transfer station is not taking anything from the burn areas at all. And the only place that is taking anything is the Hillsborough Station. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's what I thought. Uh, do you, do we know if the Hillsborough Station takes hazardous waste? I thought that it did.
I believe Hillsborough does, and I will check on that to be sure, but I think that they, DEQ has them. Uh, certified to take hazardous waste as well.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Gary.
So on, on this decision point today for the governor's office, are you prepared to direct Nancy to say, yes, we're in? Or do you want to say not sure? Do you want to delegate this to Chair Bernard and Vice Chair Schrader? Then Nancy can meet with them after this one o'clock meeting to brief them. It sounds like we're locked into a decision today, Nancy. Is that right? So.
Yeah, yes. And yeah, I, I, from what I understand, they, they want to know today if we're interested. I want to be able to say we're interested if these things play out, but I'm not sure how much they'll.
Well, I, I, I agree. Uh, we should be interested, but we don't know all the details. So. Uh, I would say I would express interest uh, and wait for the details to, to, you know. And if all they're asking is, are you interested? Then great. But we, more details we'll have to hear probably. Maybe in strategy on Friday. We would on Friday, wouldn't we? Yeah.
I was, I was going to say, cause we, does that mean a yes or a no? Or interested, you know, are they going to take that? I don't know. How much pressure will they put on us to?
And I won't know that until one o'clock. Um, so again, I could, you know, uh, try to talk to the chair. And to Commissioner Schrader, since they're also on that committee. It's whatever this group, the, the, the question wants to do.
Ken.
I would support the chair and vice chair and Nancy having that discussion. Uh, and if, if, if it's. Controversial, bring it back to us. Otherwise, let's get it done.
Sonia. Paul, I can't see your thumb, so unless you go like this.
Yeah, I, what I, what's not clear to me is um, if it's, if it's just, are we interested, like Jim said? But if there's consequences or factors, I, I'd like to have those clearly understood as to what uh, you know, what that means. And um, I know that we had talked about this before i- in a work session, I believe. And um, you know, being on the hook um, in perpetuity for, in somewhat, not really perpetuity. But being on the hook for the entire cleanup was something that um. I had concerns about.
Yes, and this.
We all do.
Yeah, we do. And this is really, this decision point is really about, do we want to go with the state? If the state is going, if the state is going to do all of this cleanup. Do we want to do with their, go with their contractor, have them pay for it and everything? Which there are a lot of questions around. So it's not, this is not about yet. It is not about, are we going to do cleanup for homeowners yet? That's, this is not the decision there. This is about, is, do we want to go with the state in what they're proposing?
Yeah, and of course, what it, what it would incentivize me if the state picks up that responsibility that I just, I just referred to. If they were to do that, then I'm very interested.
Well, I thought that, I thought yesterday when the question, there were three things. Uh, do you want to do it? Uh, do you want the state to do it? And I forget what the other one was. But the state had already decided to do it, to uh, control the contracts. And they just kind of wanted us to say, yeah, that's okay. You pay for it and you control the contracts. Of course, our concern is who's going to be contractor? They're going to look, they did say they were going to look at, uh, you know. Uh, diversity, equity, inclusion and all those things with our contractors. But are there qualified contractors uh, in the metro area or in the state to do this work the proper way? And that's where our concern would be right now. But we, they had already made up their mind, but we agreed we'd let them pay for it. All right, so Gary, I don't see any other questions, Gary?
So Nancy, after your meeting, if you feel something has shifted, we'll talk to Chair Bernard and Commissioner Schrader.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, COVID nineteen updates. We have Philip Mason Joyner, our Public Health Director. And I don't know if Nancy, if you're going to help or not. But uh, Philip, go ahead.
Thanks, Gary, and good morning, commissioners. Happy to be here to share our weekly COVID nineteen update. Christina, could you go ahead and share the slides for us? Um, so with our, here's our weekly case data. Data information about the number of cases we have each week. As anticipated, we have seen an increase. This is information we pull and review. It's, it's from each Monday to Sunday each week. And I did want to share um, just even more current data from Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday this week. We are hopeful that we're moving out of the high thirties and perhaps this increases now. Um, slowing a little bit, moving us to twenties. Um, we will see as things progress and what changes. Um, but really it's workplace outbreaks and small gatherings of family and friends that continue to drive our cases here in Clackamas County. We are really concerned with the weather changing, folks not being able to socialize outside and socially distant. That's going to have a big impact on our cases uh, moving into the fall and into the holiday season. Next slide, please. Here is the weekly phase two metrics. We just made it into one table to be a little bit easier to read and navigate. Um, again, this week we meet four of the six criteria for phase two. So hospitalization of our cases um, continues to be low and that's very, very good that we're not seeing those severe. Illnesses and surges of folks having to go to the hospital. Um, what's driving this is the case increases that were just reflected in the previous slide. And um, through our contact tracing work, not being able to identify the source of the cases. Which is an indicator of community spread. I'm really, really proud of our team here at Clackamas County Public Health. Again, we're at ninety-eight percent. That's really um, the metric that we're contacting folks within twenty-four hours. That's one of the ones that we really can't control. And it, with that many cases, it has been challenging. These, these interviews, these case investigations, they take hours upon hours. It's a lot of work and um, we have um, seen some turnover. We are, feels like we're constantly hiring and training folks. It takes several weeks to get folks fully up to speed. E- each case is, has a different, unique, unique concerns have to be addressed. Um, it's a lot to learn and take on and just continue to be appreciative of the staff and all, all the, all the hard work that they do behind the scenes. Um, so I would say in general, phase two metrics for this week, not a whole lot of changes. We are doing. Um, quite well in comparison to, to our other counties. When you look at the tri-county. Um, not a lot of big changes on these, these metrics for this week in our region. Right, please. For schools, um, there is a lot of questions and we're providing a lot of consultation to all of our schools, both public and private. We did send out a letter this week to clarify the metrics. Um, right now, schools are able, assuming that they meet the state requirements for their plans. Are able to provide limited in-person instruction for specific groups of students. Um, however, um, case for three, kindergarten through third grade, we were hopeful that those were going to be able to open. Um, that is not the case, given the current state of our, our cases and these metrics. The governor did share at her press conference last week that she is um, interested in reexamining these requirements. And potentially making changes. I anticipate that we'll likely hear about that sometime in early November. And um, hopeful that we'll have opportunities to provide feedback on that. And then I just have one more slide. So as your county public health director, I really want to encourage people to not wait and to get your flu shot. This year, it's more important than ever in the COVID environment um, to help protect yourself and protect others. Along with helping uh, potential strains on our healthcare systems that folks really need to get their flu shots. Folks can go contact their healthcare provider. They can go to their local pharmacy. And we're also putting on these different drive-through um, events across the county. Um, that are free, open to the public. Um, please come, please get your flu shot. We put a lot of work into these events and hope that we'll run into the gate problem of running out of vaccines. Um, we have a lot of partners that I want to thank. Clackamas Community College, North Clackamas School District. Walla Walla University, Clackamas Fire, Neighborhood Health Centers, the Rotary Club of Clackamas. Malala River School District, the Oregon Health Authority, Kaiser Permanente Northwest. And our own Clackamas County Fairgrounds that are all putting in so much hard work. Um, to put on these events that start next Wednesday. And these are all great exercises with the hope of having a safe and effective COVAC, COVID nineteen vaccine. Um, in the future, that this will, these, these events will prepare us to do that. And that is my report for this week. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a question. I'm sorry, I couldn't find my raise hand thing fast enough. So, so if I'm just hearing anecdotally. You know, most kids aren't in, in-class instruction because we're not meeting the metrics. But then yet I'm hearing, I was just from different people that different private entities are having in-person instruction for kids. I'm just curious if you could explain what's going on and what the, what the requirements are.
There was a very, very small window of about two days when the state um, put a pause on the test positivity requirement. For school reopening, um, which Clackamas County did meet all the metrics to be able to. Uh, allow in-person learning through kindergarten through third grade. A handful of private schools to go ahead and open. Um, however, now, you know, we cautious, we cau- we were really um. Communicating that folks need to be cautious because we were seeing that. At, in the next few days, we, Clackamas County may not be meeting those metrics, that it wouldn't be sustainable. And now they're in a position where they're going to have to um, go back to comprehensive distance learning. And this impacts uh, just a handful of, of schools in our, in our county.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. I, it's so challenging to keep up with. How, how things are moving and then what the consequences or opportunities there are based on the data. So. I appreciate understanding. Now, it all makes sense. Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Thank you, Philip. Uh, Gary?
All right, ready to move on to Housing Authority?
Thank you, Philip. I'll announce that the board will recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item. And with that, introduce our Housing Authority Commissioner, Anne Lindstra. Anne, welcome. You're on mute if you're trying to say anything, but you don't need to. I'll ask the clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by title.
First, today, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda has one item. It's approval to execute a contract between the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And A-one quality construction for Clackamas Heights Deck Replacement Project.
Uh, do any commissioners want to remove this item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the housing agenda consent, the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. You, is there a second? Uh, it's been seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, um, Christina, please poll us.
Hey, uh, Commissioner Lindstra?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Savis? You're on mute, Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Perfect. And Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard, please.
Aye, motion carries unanimously and thank you, Anne, again. I know you're calling from Hawaii. That looks a little stormy there.
It's beautiful here.
Thank you. See you next time. Gary, oh wait, first I'll announce that the board will adjourn as the Housing Authority and reconvene. As the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. And Gary?
Uh, next commissioners, we have a presentation, Water Environment Services Update on the Oregon City Ballot Measure. We have Greg Geist, the Director of Water Environment Services, to present.
All right, thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, thank you Chair Bernard and Commissioners for the opportunity to talk to you today. I will be brief. Uh, I wanted to give you an update on a proposed ballot measure uh, for November third in Oregon City. Uh, it's ballot measure three dash five six two. Uh, and I will go ahead and share my screen. Uh, it's ballot measure three dash five six two, uh, and I will go ahead and share my screen. Uh-oh. Okay. All right, um.
Greg, would you like me to share the screen? I can put up your presentation if you'd like.
Oh, it's not working? Mine's showing it.
Oh.
Yeah, you go ahead, go ahead though. I'll head. Huh?
Nothing.
All right, Christina, are you able to share yours?
There we go. Here we go.
All right.
All right, it's up.
Okay, next slide, please. Christina, can you move to the next slider? Okay, this is a map that show, well, first of all, oh, we lost it.
Sorry, I thought it wasn't working. Let me just get it right back up.
Well, while you're doing that, um, our existing outfall runs from our wastewater treatment plant in Oregon City down along Old Agnes Avenue adjacent to I two oh five, and then jogs over, uh, behind the mall there. Uh, it's the gray line that you see on this, uh, aerial photo, uh, and exits through, um, Clackamas Park and out into the river where we discharge our treated effluent from our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, that outfall is nearing capacity. It's about six feet in diameter. Uh, during wet weather events, we need additional capacity, uh, moving forward. So we did a study in the river and along, uh, potential routes, a- and we found an optimal place in the river. Um, you'll see the, the green line on the map shows the proposed route of a new outfall, um, out into the, uh, underneath John Storm Park and out into the Willamette River. Uh, and we picked that spot because it's deeper, uh, and it's a very stable, uh, substrate, a very stable river bed material. So that, that pipe would be about seven and a half feet in diameter. Uh, next slide, please. Um, oh, well, yeah, so this is kind of a cartoon that shows what the proposed route would look like from a side view. Uh, you can see our resource recovery facility there on the right. And then the, the, we would open cut, we essentially dig a trench down Old Agnes Avenue, which we actually own, uh, down to Main Street. Uh, and then we would drill a shaft in the cloverleaf of I two oh five at the Oregon City exit and tunnel, uh, back towards the treatment plant, uh, beneath Main Street and connect up with, uh, a trench there. And then, uh, also tunnel out from there and into the river. Um, the plan right now is we're looking for the, the optimal, uh, place to, uh, put that tunnel, uh, the depth and the route. Uh, and we would recover that, we call it a wet recovery. Uh, that tunneling machine would actually come up out of the river bottom and would be retrieved by a dredge. Uh, if you look at this, uh, side view, you can see Highway ninety-nine and Clackamas Drive and John Storm Park there along the river. Uh, the tunnel would be about fifty feet, um, beneath the park, uh, and then daylight out in the middle of the river. So funding for this is about a twenty-two million dollar project. Uh, it is included in our five, our approved five-year cap improvement plan. Uh, the measure would not raise taxes and construction would be scheduled i- if it's successful, uh, for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, a little bit about community engagement. Um, we've had, uh, this is actually a, a small walking tour that we did with the Confederate Tribes, uh, of the Grand Ron. Um, we've done two virtual open houses, one in August, one in September, uh, a number of small walking group tours. Um, we've talked to over a hundred individuals and groups, uh, reaching out to inform them about the project and inform them about the ballot measure. We've reached out to the various regulatory agencies, uh, ODFW, Corps of Engineers, DEQ, and, um, really just been kind of, uh, on the ground informing the public, uh, all summer. And lastly, we do, uh, this slide that I had, uh, fortunately it's not on this slide, but we also created a website for this project. It is www dot tri-cityoutfall dot info if people want to get more detailed information about the project. So that's my overview. Just wanted to remind folks that we have this project, uh, proposal and on the ballot for November third in Oregon City. Thank you.
All right, sir. Bye.
Thanks, Greg. I know we've been working on it. I did colleagues have a chance to go on the tour and one of the reasons it was important, Greg, isn't it because it's passing under, uh, land that is, uh, uh, very important to the tribe? I think it's part of that. And my understanding is that the outfall itself, it's going to be gravity, uh, gravity driven. So, uh, it'll help save taxpayers money because of the way it's going to be constructed.
That's correct.
Okay, um, I wanted to, to tell you that this isn't really the, the, you know, there's a lot of things on the ballot and this is kind of a quiet ballot initiative, but it's only going to be, uh, voted on by Oregon City. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. It's, it's a, a requirement of the Oregon City's charter, uh, that any non-park-related uses or easements need to go to a vote of the people.
Okay, so that's why it's on the ballot, but it's going to have an impact to the entire system for the tri-city area. So one city's voting, but we have to understand this is a bigger picture as well for public health and safety and water quality. Okay, so thank you for all your work on this. Um, as I said, there are a lot of measures and this is the one I hope everybody gives two thumbs up to in Oregon City for the, the sake of, uh, our rivers and the clean water, so.
So vote often and vote yes. Paul?
Yeah, I, I, Greg, I just have a question out of curiosity. Um, how's, how's public involvement going? I, I just saw your, your, your picture there of engaging the, the tribal members and that's great. That's awesome. And I'm just wondering how, I, I know that in the past it's been, um, you know, efforts of district, of your district and other districts to get as much community involvement as possible. Um, and just kind of wondering, you know, if there's still energy behind that and, and, um, are we accommodating that? Is it waning because of COVID? You know, that kind of a question.
Thank you for that. Um, you know, it's been challenging. Uh, Shelley Perini has been kind of on point for us on this and we've been really had to pivot away from, you know, inviting people, uh, to our facility and having the, uh, poster boards and sticky notes and, and, you know, the, the traditional way of reaching out to the public. So we've done a lot of it virtually. I mentioned the virtual open houses, a lot of social media, and then just a lot of on-the-ground meeting with, uh, homeowners, uh, or business owners, um, neighborhood associations, business association, chambers of commerce, rotary clubs. Uh, it's, that's really, we've just been trying to talk to anybody who will listen.
Yeah, I, and the reason I ask is, uh, last week, I think it was Tuesday, we had a presentation from the Hamlets and I had posed the question about community involvement, COVID at the meetings. And normally, you know, I think one of the Hamlets, you know, typically has a pretty good attendance at their meetings when they're live, but pre-COVID. Um, and so I'm, I'm getting mixed reviews, but one of the concerns I have is that, not necessarily with West, so don't, don't take this as a West thing at all, but one of the current concerns I have is that, um, some of the, some of the projects that require public involvement and we want to see public involvement, um, is severely almost nonexistent, right? Because of COVID, so that's why I posed the question. Just got, they have concerns and in some areas where we really need to have that, uh, that level of public involvement and buy-in, um, it's very, very hard to get it right now.
I, I would agree and I'll, I'll offer that, um, the virtual open houses that we did, uh, were not well-attended at all. Um, and we, we don't know if that's because it's, it's not an issue for people, um, or if we didn't reach, you know, the right people or if we're not being effective. So again, we're, we're kind of firing with all barrels, um, and just seeing what works. Thank you.
So let, let me, um, obviously this, you're not going to affect the surface of the park you're going through. It's fifty feet down. Uh, let me ask you something. I mean, um, almost all treatment plants, uh, diffuse the water into a, a river, uh, or a lake or whatever. Tell me, how clean is that water, uh, that, that you release?
Well, you mentioned that, uh, I'll start with the diffuse part. Um, our current outfall is in a shallower, um, portion of the river and there's two ports, um, that the effluent enters out of. This new outfall will be much deeper and have up to twenty different diffuser ports. So that's going to be better for water quality. Um, and I would just say that, um, in many respects, the, and I, I like to shut. This is a picture, this is a bottle of the effluent that leaves the Tri-City facility. And I can, I would challenge you to make a distinction between this and drinking water. Um, in, in many cases, it's much cleaner than the Willamette is, uh, when it enters.
Would you please drink a sample of that? I have actually seen somebody drink a bottle, uh, a sample of that. Anyway, thank you all, uh, thank you very much. Any additional questions? Well, thank you. You know, it's interesting, these virtual meetings, sometimes, uh, I've seen as many as two hundred people on a meeting. Other times there's three or four. Uh, I don't know what you do unless you build light rail there. But anyway, thank you very much. Gary?
Thank you.
Over to you.
Thanks, Greg. Uh, next is Consent Agenda and Christina would read that, please.
I will. Let me see if I can share my screen. Okay, so for Health, Housing and Human Services, Approval of Amendment Number One to Personal Service Contract with Northwest Housing Alternatives, Inc. For Home-Based Program Operations and Financial Assistance, Approval of U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Continuum of Care, Planning Grant Agreement for Planning Activities Associated with the COC, Community Development. For Department of Transportation and Development, Approval to Accept Transportation Growth Management Grant Award to Update the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plans. Approval to Apply for a Local Bridge Program Grant for Funding to Replace Three Bridges. For Disaster Management, Approval of Memorandum of Agreement Between Clackamas County and the Malala River School District for Emergency Disaster-Related Use of Malala Community Gymnasium. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. Approval of a Grant Agreement and Award with the Center for Tech and Civil Life. For County Council, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Between Clackamas and Monoma Counties for HIPAA and Part Two Privacy Officer Consultation. Under Business and Community Services, Approval of Amendment Number Two of the MOU between Business and Community Services, County Parks, and Hoodlands Women's Club to Extend the Time to Transfer Properties to a Local Park District Upon Its, uh, Its Formation. And Department of Human Resources, Adoption of a Deferred Compensation Committee Charter. And that's your consent agenda.
Thank you. Uh, does any commissioner wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Couple of seconds, all right. Uh, so it's removed and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next up is, uh, our, uh, Gary, I believe. Oh, no. All right, but are, is there anyone in the audience who would like to, um, testify? And Christina's going to handle.
Yes, I will take care of that, Chair Bernard. Now is the time for general comment relating to any county business. If you have a comment-related county business, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling in by phone and want to give comment, please hit star nine now. I will give people a few seconds to do that. Uh, just checked our email and we do not have any emails, uh, that came through the BCC at clackamas dot com or dot US email account. And I'm not seeing any hands, Chair Bernard.
Great, well, we'll close the public portion of this and go to our county administrator for an update.
Thank you Chair and Commissioners. I want to, as always, share some good news of work that our employees and programs perform. Today I'd like to recognize County Employee Ken Beechek, who is a Job Development Specialist with Health, Housing and Human Services. Uh, during the wildfires, he and his family personally took in multiple evacuated families, uh, to his home as well as animals and vehicles for over a week. At his own time and expense, he, Ken and his wife provided food, shelter and protection for anyone that needed it, all the while, uh, helping provide support day and night during this time. Uh, Ken has been working in Clackamas County for over twenty years and has provided essential services to disable displaced veterans in our community. His coworkers describe him as having a big heart and a big soul for services. Uh, employees say they are very proud to work alongside Ken and to see the good work he produces daily to those who are most vulnerable. So I really want to recognize Ken as just one example of our employees who go beyond the call of duty to support our community. Uh, Ken models the core values of our county, our service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability and trust. So thank you, Ken, for your great work to Clackamas County. That's my update today, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, first up for Commissioner Communication is Martha.
Okay, and I'm not on mute. Um, it's been a pretty busy week. Monday, uh, was the Association of Oregon Counties. I believe Commissioner Savis and I attended the transportation and community development, uh, conversations there where AOC is starting to take a look at our legislative priorities. And I hope Commissioner Savis can say a little bit more about that. Uh, when it's his turn, you know, we attended the Board of Directors meeting. Um, there is going to be a dues increase, uh, because they also still have structural issues with the budget. Uh, because right now they're sustainable. We, we avoided, um, really going bankrupt. Uh, all the counties, uh, really rose to the occasion. Uh, but now in order to sustain what we have, um, they're going to really, uh, finally kind of present a dues increase uh, to the whole body and I think it, I think it will go through. Uh, they have a really new outstanding group of employees that are doing a lot of the work for us. Uh, I know that Commissioner Fisher may want to say something about human services. Uh, but, um, yeah, I think that they're on sure footing and I, I always kid, kid Jim, uh, Jim Dougherty, President Dougherty this year, because when I was president, I had the, I had the financial issues and he had, but he has to deal with COVID. So, um, both of us commiserate because we've had some pretty challenging times, um, with all of that. Um, okay, the other thing that happened Monday, which I, I wanted to let folks know about, is I met with, uh, Maria Guerra, uh, otherwise known as Meg. And this is the group that, um, really that is doing the farmworker housing in Malala. And, uh, basically I talked with her, the challenges that they've been facing with farmworkers when accessing and providing services. Uh, she has sent me some information about that, uh, and health research, um, education. Um, you know, the need for, for that demographic to have after-school programs and daycare is pretty huge. So, um, I'm going to continue to keep in touch with her and take a look at some of these significant reports. Uh, there is land for sale in Malala that abuts the, uh, and Gary, I haven't had a chance to tell you this yet, that abuts the farmworker housing that they are actually taking over from us. So there might be an opportunity there, uh, if we can just have a conversation about that in the near future. Um, you know, I went to the Clackamas County Business Alliance meeting to listen to about, again, the measure three point five six two. It's the quiet one that has to do with sewer system. It's the quiet one that has to do with sewer systems in Oregon, that Oregon City needs to vote on. And Craig Geist and Shelley have done a great job with outreach. And I encourage a big yes vote on that because it's, like I said, it's probably a quieter one. There's a lot of other measures, including the children's levy that's going on out there. And so I'm hopeful that this one, this one rises up to the top as well. Yeah, Jim and I went to the Metro Wildfire Economic Recovery Conversation the other day. And I think we gave you a pretty good update on that with Nancy this morning. And PAC. Last night was very interesting because we are starting to look at what PAC is going to evolve into. And there seems to be a pivot more towards housing and having a larger conversation at the federal level. That's one of the things that were discussed last night. That's still going to be kind of in the making as we, as we move forward. We're really trying to figure out, you know, given, given the fact that land use has moved to the cities for annexation and things of that sort, what does that mean for PAC? What are some of the new things we need to be working on? What is potentially our regional role? That's really about, oh, I did go to the Clackamas Workforce Partnership. We had a Board of Directors meeting this morning. We had an update on their work that they're doing with our prosperity collaboratives. I'm here to let you know that they will be giving a presentation next week. And they have completely aligned with our performance Clackamas metrics for job creation and where we want to move and go. And they are actually incorporating our metrics into what their plan is for the future as one of our nonprofits. We are the only county, frankly, that has not given revenue to our workforce boards. We have really given them as much capacity to building help as we can can with our other, you know, with our folks that we work with and Human Services and Economic Development. Maybe it is a pretty hard ask to do, but that might be something, as they align with our performance, that we take a closer look at in the future. But that's, again, a discussion to be had. Finally, yeah, I think that's really about it from, from my perspective at this point. It was a good meeting, and I enjoy working with them. Thanks.
Thank you, Martha. Sonia. Your mic.
Okay, I'm so glad that there's a touchscreen on this laptop because I could just touch it. Otherwise, I couldn't figure out where my mouse was with all of my screens now that I'm using the Gary Schmidt method of zooming. Okay, so I did attend the Clackamas Service Center Harvest of Hope Gala last evening. And instead of telling you all about that, I thought that I would just share the video that I was asked to present at the gala. It is the relationships that we build that make this journey called life so fulfilling. And it's kind of sad not to be with everyone this year. But we are all together in what we think is important. So just a couple remembrances that I have. As a new commissioner and getting connected with the Clackamas Service Center, I had the wonderful opportunity of kind of just hanging outside of the Clackamas Service Center. And this was when the, after the fire, but before the Clackamas Service Center was fully functioning. So there was still a gate around the service center. Then I met a gentleman there, and we became friends. I heard his story. I learned about his challenges and his struggles. And there were some simple things that were, were kind of tough. Well, when I reached out to Deborah Mason, who we all know and love, she knew this gentleman, she knew about all the struggles, and she was already working with staff to meet his needs. And I just have to say, those relationships are amazing. And even still, I connect with Deborah and I get the updates. And, and I know that this gentleman is keeping on, keeping on, even though the circumstances and the struggle is, is paramount. So today, what I want to share, in some sense, is the bigger picture of where we are in Clackamas County. So the Clackamas Service Center serves those who are most challenged. And in Clackamas County, we have about, these are our most recent numbers that I received from staff. We have about eleven hundred unsheltered individuals. We also have in Clackamas County forty-nine percent of our renters in Clackamas County paying more than one-third of their income in rent. And of those, of those that are over sixty-five, sixty-seven percent are rent burdened. So when you think about this, it's easy to see how these individuals and families are one paycheck away from a crisis, from a crisis that could lead to homelessness. I also want to spend a little bit of time talking about our children. So we may all have heard that Oregon has one of the worst rates for children experiencing homelessness in the country. In the region, in our tri-county region, there were about seven thousand children that experienced houselessness. So when you add on to that the number of our children that are food insecure, so about twelve point six percent of the children in Clackamas County are food insecure. So what is important? What do we need to do? Well, I can tell you the Clackamas Service Center is doing it. They provide food boxes for those that need meals. Before COVID, they had onsite meals. Now they're putting them into boxes and making sure that people can pick them up, or they're delivering them. They have partnerships with Lot Whitcomb School and making sure that families are getting the services and the support that they need to help address food insecurity. They have had amazing community fairs where they connect people with services, which are so wonderful for folks that are needing help. Now, this wonderful organization, this organization relies on support. About a quarter of their support comes from government resources. Another quarter percent comes from corporate and businesses. Another twenty-five percent comes from grants. But the twenty-five percent that I want to talk to you about today comes from individual donors like yourself. Absolutely critically essential that we all step up to help the Clackamas Service Center. So part of why we give is because it feels good to us to help others. We know that our gift will go a long way to help those who are most in need. It really matters. So the quote that we're all familiar with from Mahatma Gandhi is that the true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. Well, we today have the opportunity to give, to give, to be part of the larger effort to help those most in need in our community. And for that, I applaud each and every one of you for being part of this effort. Thank you. Yeah, so I will leave it there. I think that's what I have for today.
Looks like Chair Bernard might have fallen off of the, oh, I think he's come back on.
Sorry, I got knocked out. So it was a great, I did a great job last night. I just wanted to mention that I think their goal was somewhere around eighty thousand, and they raised a hundred and two thousand, three hundred and three, which is great when you consider it was all virtual, no meals included. So good job last night. So next would be Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So obviously, it's been a pretty busy time between doing this job and running for reelection on this job. I have been plenty busy with forums. I've had four of them in the last week or so. But moving to what we, what we should be working on, the Tourism Board met yesterday, and there's a couple of things they're looking at, one of which is because the income is better than they had expected, they believe they will be able to start rehiring back a couple of the folks that they had to let go. The board then voted to, to do that. There's going to be some focusing on the communities that have been the hardest hit by COVID, excuse me, not COVID, but the fires in particular. And also working on a plan where they try to differentiate Clackamas County more effectively from other parts of the region, I'll say. What else? Having been out a little bit and talking to people, albeit carefully because of COVID, I have heard no negatives on the Outfall Project in Oregon City. I go to the farmer's markets pretty regularly. So I, I think that it being a non-tax issue, I think it probably will do well in the, in the voting. For the Workforce Partnership, folks, the C two P two program may be an opportunity to help out there. I know Martha and I have talked about that before with Gary. But it's still in the works, no decisions made. But hopefully, we will be able to help them out and, and also work closely with the apprentice programs. And the only other things have been a major tour out in Hillsborough with two branch bank and new beautiful buildings that were built with C L T. Did that a couple of weeks ago, along with the fire tours and whatnot like that. I know many of my colleagues have done also. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Paul?
Yes. Yeah, last night, I, well, I was unable, obviously, to attend the Clackamas Service Center fundraiser event. I was, had an N C P R D meeting and also had a brief presentation to make to the Park Avenue Work Group that met. So had a very, very long day yesterday and, and well into the evening. I, I thought I would build a little bit on a couple points with regard to that Commissioner Fisher kind of spoke to a bit there with regard to the rent burden and really about the cost of living. That's really what it boils down to. The cost of living is impacting the most vulnerable, more than it's impacting those that are, have a secure job or have a secure income and have secure resources. And whether it's rent or, in this case, transportation, most especially, that, that is now becoming a larger and larger impact for folks. I, I remember back fifteen years ago when I sat on M P A C and the Metro M P A C survey that had been done and the analysis had been done that, you know, these transportation-oriented developments are a good thing because what not better can we do to help these vulnerable people than to reduce their transportation costs? Because they're spending about two thousand dollars a year on, on transportation, and we can reduce that by, you know, at least half if they, if we build transit into their, into their housing and in these mixes. And T O D's transportation-oriented development is just, just that. Well, ten years later, in 2015, we realized that, geez, everywhere we did that, the cost of housing actually was, has gone up considerably and actually became the most expensive areas in the region. I think a P S U study indirectly pointed that out, which is part of my presentation last, last evening a little bit, is that we need to be cognizant as policymakers, as decision makers, whether it's rent burden, whether it's rents, housing, or transportation or the relationship thereof, that we're not creating a more expensive, higher cost of living for those very people that were, that we spoke to or spoke about earlier. So it's ironic that now here is, you know, ten years later, fifteen years later, from that point when Metro was saying we need to reduce their transportation cost, that housing has now jumped up to where housing is now three, four, five, six hundred dollars a month higher than it was in those areas where transportation-oriented development was, was implemented. So in those areas where we tried to help them, we actually made their life more expensive and worse, just in those areas, let alone what the rents have gone up considerably. And it just seems ironic, it just seems unfortunate, it just seems to be almost contrary, that today, with all these studies on tolling and all these things that are before us, that we're making transportation more expensive than it's ever been. And that impacts everyone. So it seems like, you know, on one hand, in the guise of trying to help all those folks, we hurt them, and we hurt them hard on housing. And now we're giving the, the second punch, the one-two punch, is now proposing to increase transportation costs indirectly with tolling and all these other mechanisms out there. And we're going to do a lot of that, apparently, and announce a lot of that, unfortunately, in December, about a month after the election. I think that's unfortunate, that people are going to understand that impact even, even greater. So that, that concerns me. And we got a taste of that at A O C. I'm going to just address Commissioner Schrader's point about talking a little about A O C on Monday. I did attend the transportation piece, and we had a presentation from O D A on that. They have a seven hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall in their funding as a result of COVID and less gasoline sales and other factors, economics such as the increasing cost outpacing their revenues. And, you know, again, that December deadline, they'll be announcing how they're going to tackle all of that, how they're going to tackle building these projects that were mandated in H B twenty seventeen, like I two oh five, Highway two seventeen, La Rose Quarter, and trying to solve some of our traffic congestion issues. And by the way, a lot of the traffic congestion issues we have that we're focusing on are we're also having safety issues because of bottlenecks. Bottlenecks create accidents by their very nature. So with, with all of that said, and my earlier question to, to Greg Geist, when he was talking about, I asked about public involvement. My concern right now is that there is so little public involvement and awareness about what's about to happen that I, we need to step up our game in a significant way. And that just doesn't apply to transportation, doesn't just apply to housing or what, but all of our policy decisions and everything, everything that we're doing. And when we have people that are really want to be engaged and they have interest, we need to seize that opportunity to get and pull them in into what we do good at Clackamas County, what interests them. And that's something I think we need to capitalize on. And Martha made me remember this. Martha, when you were on C four back in the mid-two thousands, when we, when you pushed to get the Hamlets and the Villages on C four, a seat on there, and then subsequent to that, and you were successful. Great job, congratulations. But there was pushback. There, there was pushback because that would bring another seat to the table, another awareness, and another mechanism for public involvement, which we take pride in. I, I think we take pride in in Clackamas County. I know I do. And then subsequent to that, a couple, three years later, we were able to get a seat for the C P Os. And I just want to just acknowledge that we've, I believe that we, we at Clackamas County value our citizens, we value public involvement, we value that, that feedback. And right now with COVID, it is just, it is just compromised severely. But there is a lot of energy, and I'm hoping that, that as we work towards more public involvement, that our culture and our, our opportunities and efforts to increase public involvement where possible is not only encouraged, but welcomed, embraced. And at times, I know that with COVID, we don't have that. But at times, when we do have that opportunity, we ought to seize that and not try to dismiss it. And, and I will hopefully be able to speak to that if that becomes an issue in the, in the future. But what we do, I just want to say, I'll, I'll end with this, is that I have been talking to the leadership, the, our volunteers that have been participating in the Park Avenue process and have heard their concerns a little bit about the lack of public involvement. And this is such an important issue that when it does come to us, I really hope that we can really roll up our sleeves and see what we can do to examine the work that's done there and make sure that we are. to examine the work that's done there and make sure that we are making people's lives better at the end of the day and not increasing their cost of living burden. And I'll stop there and wish everyone well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stephen, you know, you're the only guy on the screen who hasn't said anything. Would you like to add anything today?
Chair, I just matched you with the donation to the Clackamas Service Center.
Good, thank you. Yeah, they certainly have a lot of needs. So just because they've met their goal doesn't mean they can't exceed it. So thank you all very much. I think one thing, by the way, rents in the metro area are down 14% right now. They're down 14% from this time last year. That's not necessarily true in Clackamas County. I don't know that. But it certainly has made a big difference when people can't pay rent, probably can't pay the deposit, they're lowering those prices. I would say that Clackamas County has gone out of its way to encourage and embrace community input. It's very difficult to make people come. But we've had some meetings where the subject matter, which I'm sure we're going to have a few here maybe next month, on short-term rentals, which will draw lots of attention. I think one thing that, another thing that I've heard other commissioners talk a lot about, and that is if we had a living wage, you know, it wouldn't take one-third of your rent to pay, I mean, one-third of your paycheck to pay your rent. So we need to look at that. And just, you know, we've been talking a little bit about maybe a 1.5, Phase 1.5, rather than moving to Phase 2. We are meeting on Friday and our health folks are meeting on Friday also in the morning. And then will give us a report Friday afternoon. And I'll report back to you what we hear. I would say that the incidence of COVID virus is increasing. And remember, it's entirely up to you. Where we can put this behind us, and that is wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands and stay away from large groups. And with that, want to again thank you for attending today. By the way, we had 15 people, six attendees, audience attendees. And I appreciate the work of staff and certainly Nancy. I hope they don't require more meetings for Nancy. But, and Gary too, you're at a lot of those too. And Dr. President and Philip, thank you for your service. And with that, we're adjourned.
Wait, Mr. Chair, just a quick question. I read that article this morning about rents being down in the region. And the article that I read in the Oregonian had Portland rents were down 5.7% this September compared to last September, but not so much in the suburbs, that are really related to cities. And so I was just really interested in where you got a quote of 14% of rent be lower than...
The Portland, Oregon Rental Market 2020 update from Portland, Oregon News, Portland Rental News. And it says, "Average rents in Oregon are $1,453 per month. The average rent has decreased 12% since the same period last year when it was $1,600." I'm reading it right off the web just a little bit ago. So it's the RPH, Rent Portland Homes, Portland, Oregon Rental Market. That's...
Yeah, well, I was really interested since there's definitely different information out there. And I was fascinated to hear that number. So I'm going to look at that. Thank you so much for clarifying. I really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Well, thank you all.
Yeah, and one thing on that rent number, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, my memory serves me, that the average rent in Portland in an apartment in 2005 was $600 in 2005.
Well, yeah, and a hamburger was $1.99. So a living wage would solve this whole problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're adjourned.